I want to make sure that we have. We're respectful of your time this evening, so we're going to go ahead and get started. Welcome everyone tonight. Again, thank you for joining us. My name is Jess Upchurch. I am the Chief Operating Officer here at Girl Scouts of Southern Illinois. I'm so thankful for each of you taking time out of your evening. I know it's a busy time of year. I know we're all here and are part of Girl Scouts for one reason, ready to make a difference in the lives of our Girl Scouts. Whether you're returning volunteer or new to our community, your dedication and support are invaluable. I just want to make sure you know that this evening. To kick things off, can we please start with a brief sound check by way of the chat log? If you could please share just one word in the chat log, if you feel comfortable, that describes what inspired you to volunteer with Girl Scouts? Just one word that'll help us know if our settings are right to have a successful meeting where we can hear each other and see the chat log. See responses popping in.
Poe? Does it, did you hear that?
I did. Thank you, Jennifer. Okay. I think that you're hearing me okay, and I see your responses popping in, so that all feels good. As we move forward tonight, we'll discuss end of membership year 2024, our girls for the upcoming year, forthcoming changes to be aware of, a preview of exciting activities and events that we have planned and how we can work together to provide the best overall experience for all of our Girl Scouts. Before we do that, let's take a moment to remind ourselves of the Girl Scout Promise, which guides everything that we do. But first, let's also recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for our Girl Scout Promise. On my honor, I will try to serve God and my country, to help people at all times and to live by the Girl Scout law. Thank you. So Happy New Girl Scout Year. As of yesterday, for those of you that don't know, our membership year flips over after September 30th on October 1st. So I want to be the first, if you haven't heard it already, Happy New Year. Before I tell you a bit about what's coming up this year, let me share briefly how we ended with membership for our membership year 2024. We wrapped up 2024 with a whopping 9,981 members. That's 6,363 girl members and 3,618 adult members. We were able to exceed the number of members served the year before and surpassed the overall membership goal set before us. Aside from the traditional troop pathway, GSOSI staff continue to serve over 1,300 girls in the East St. Louis and Coquah School Districts during their school day to give those girls a Girl Scout experience where they may have not had it available to them otherwise. We were also fortunate enough to serve over 100 girls during the summer of 2024 at overnight camp, which was a huge success over the very first year that we were kind of introducing it in 2023. Thanks to volunteers like each of you, we also served another 600 plus girls through day camp experiences all throughout the council's jurisdictions. Thank you. As we venture into the 2025 membership year, girls will have the opportunity to participate in many program options. And I want to just pause and say, our program team here on staff has been very thoughtful about how we deliver program and how to make sure that more girls can be part of one experience together. So whether our Girl Scouts wish to participate as a troop, an individual, or a combination of the two, whether in person, online, or exploring the Girl Scout leadership experience through outdoor experiences or our travel pathway, we have ample availability right now on our events on our calendar at GSOFSI.org. In fact, I have a sneak peek, if you'd like, of what our program team has around the bend for Summer Camp 2025. Juniors or ambassadors can experience Camp Midnight, a night owl's dream. If you have any pre-teens or teenagers in the house, you can understand why they would appreciate this. They will get to stay up late to participate in all their favorite Girl Scout activities and sleep in, which doesn't happen often at camp. Also, juniors or ambassadors are going to be welcoming back the Return of Animal Adventures. This was our most popular overnight camp last year by far, and we heard loud and clear that this camp deserves a sequel, so it's coming to you. For cadets, they can gear up for a high adventure camp called Adventure Trails. Cadets through ambassadors will get to attend this camp, and it actually includes an exciting overnight canoe trip as part of that experience. We're also offering Daisy through juniors an opportunity to experience a mini overnight camp called Fairy Forest Explorer. Just imagine the magical world of fairy in the woods. And I'd be remiss not to mention the highly popular STEM camp returning for another year of education and fun. Girls have a great time at that camp as well. So through the travel pathway, as I mentioned, I want to make sure you know about the three travel opportunities we have for girl members this year. One is the getaway to Georgia to visit the birthplace and all of the beautiful surroundings that Savannah has to offer. The second trip is to explore the majestic Niagara Falls area. And the third travel opportunity for girls is to Pax Lodge, which is one of our Girl Scout Centers located in London, England. All of these trips are also already up on our program calendar on the website, and I believe someone's going to drop that link directly in the chat log for ease of access for you. You can always reach out to us if you're unable to find it when you're on the website. Coming up really quick, on November 2nd, our annual Fall Fest, which is a family event that's loved by all attendees every year. It's approaching quickly. Also, our zoo and aquarium overnights continue to fill up, and those are selling out. So if you see opportunity out there, get signed up. Don't wait, because they will sell out. We also already have over 800 registrations for these activities that we've talked about. We have also patch program activities where girls across the council can experience the same program through various activities in the patch program all at the same time. Again, check out the link on our website, and you can get signed up for any of those activities for your girls. Now for our volunteers. We just wrapped up a really successful New Leader Weekend at Camp Torquay over this past weekend. If you were a part of it, I hope that you'll share with us in the chat what you experienced. I've heard nothing but great things. But if you're looking for something coming up, from archery to CPR and first aid to camping out to youth mental health first aid, we have you covered. Also, don't forget, we also offer training by request, which is basically like a training on demand. We have a form on our website. You can search it easily, Training by Request. And as long as you have at least six learners that are coming to the training, we can organize the training in your neck of the woods. A couple other quick things. Mark your calendars for our 2025 Volunteer Training Summit. This year, it's taking place at Camp Torquay on March 29th. We are going to be offering free overnight stays on that weekend to registered attendees. So if you'll be traveling, don't worry. We have your accommodations covered. If you're not aware, Camp Torquay, all of our cabins have heating and air conditioning, so weather doesn't have to be a worry. Each night will also include special volunteer appreciation events that will be open to all of our adult members. Plus, we'll also have some certification courses available on that Sunday on March 30th. It's sure to be an exciting weekend of fun, so don't miss out. Again, that's going to be on March 29th. It'll be up on our calendar soon to be able to get all of the registration details. Lastly, if you have any questions about any of the activities that I've mentioned tonight, please never hesitate to reach out to our customer care team. They are well-trained and so willing to serve you. They can also connect you with the expert if you have additional questions that maybe they just don't have the answer to, but more than likely, they'll have you covered at your first phone call. So now I have the distinct pleasure to introduce tonight our CEO, Loretta Graham.
Loretta? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much, Jessica. Good evening, Girl Scouts of Southern Illinois. On behalf of the Board of Directors, I want to take the time to thank all of you for meeting with us tonight. It is so nice to see all of you tonight. We all have had an amazing year. You heard Jessica talk about it, and being back together is very exciting. It reminds us of our future. Our future holds in infinite possibilities. I would like to take, talk to you tonight about membership registration fees and cookie prices. Let me now start with the registration fees. Now, we have invited our delegates, our delegates for the National 57th National Council Session. We invited them tonight here to listen to you and hear you out about the membership increase that I'm getting ready to talk to you about, but just a few housekeeping items. I ask that you please keep your microphones muted at all times unless you're called upon. And there will be time for you to, for your questions. Let's talk about the registration fees. I'm sure some of you, many of you may have heard about it already. On July, in July, the National Board for the Girl Scouts of the USA called a special meeting, a special 57 council session focused on proposals to increase membership dues. Delegates from all Girl Scout councils will come together on October the 19th for this special session for the National Council to discuss and vote on these proposals. Now, as members of the Girl Scouts of Southern Illinois delegation, we are here tonight so you can share your input on the proposals so that we can take your suggestions with us into this special session. The National Board recommends that the annual youth membership be $85 and the annual adult membership be $45. If the proposal is approved at that level, there will be a three-year phase-in approach and five years of council financial assistance from the Girl Scouts of the USA. Now, these incentives are determined by the National Board and apply only at certain levels of dues increased. I would love to hear your input so we can determine how we will be voting. Let me start, and I want to thank Andrea. Andrea, I hope I get your name right. Andrea Markwork. I want to thank her for her questions. I always ask that you try to have your questions to me ahead of time. But I want to thank you for sending your questions, Andrea. And Andrea had several questions. Some of you may have the same questions. She's got 11, and I'm going to do my best to answer as many as I can. She said, what age can you purchase a lifetime membership for girls? Now, Andrea, any girl 18 or is going in, is in senior high school can purchase a lifetime membership. And the second part of that question, are there any exemptions? There is no exemptions. Is the lifetime membership going to increase in cost? No. Number three. Where is the money from partnership branding with GSUSA going? This is all absorbed in their day-to-day operations for the National Office. She said, why is headquarters still at a high-dollar property? Because relocations will be higher than the cost they have right now, because they own the building debt-free. The next question, number five, I'll get to you, but I couldn't answer number five, and we'll talk about that one a little bit. Will there be a discount for siblings and for leaders that value, that have multiple children in Scouts? They are entertaining that conversation, Andrea. If the registration increases to 45, can they stay in place for more than one year? And the answer is no. Number eight, I'll have to get back with you on that. Number nine, you asked, will uniforms be added if the fee increases? The answer is no. And number 10, will program fees be increased? For council programs, it will depend on the type of program. Jessica, did you want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So all of the programs that are offered on our event calendar are planned and implemented locally. So the national membership dues cost doesn't play a part typically in any of our program cost. We charge for the programs what it costs for us to put that program on for the girls.
Okay. Thank you, Jessica. And your last question, Andrea, says, how is Girl Scouts of the USA restructuring the organization to maintain profitability without passing the cost down to leaders and Girl Scouts? They will not be restructuring at this time. They went through a restructuring in 2020 and 2022. So they will not be restructuring at this time. Now, the other two questions, five and eight, that you have, will be taken to the meeting on October the 19th. And now, Girl Scouts of Southern Illinois, I'd like to open it up to you all for any questions that you have. Now is the time. And if there's some in the chat, Ashley or Jessica or Carrie, would you guys, you know, read it out and I'll answer it?
There aren't any in the chat yet.
Okay. And I'm happy to have our board chair, Linda, wave your hand. She's here. Man, she's amazing. Any questions?
Yeah, feel free to raise your hand. We can call them out. Kara Kattler. So I'm I'm just interested to know a little bit more about the money that's coming in with our partnerships. We're seeing Girl Scout stuff everywhere from shampoos to like everything. So you're saying that is being absorbed in everyday costs by GSUSA? Like, how much money are they bringing in for that?
Well, you know, Kara, this question, and I want you all to know, a lot of these questions that you all are asking, CEOs have talked to GSUSA about them, and this is the answer that they gave us. Is that all of that, when it comes to shampoo, candles, ice cream, all of that stuff is absorbed through their day-to-day operation? And that's the answer they gave us, Kara. And I wish I had another one. How much? I don't know that answer. Otherwise, I wouldn't believe you, me, I would tell you. But we don't know that answer. The answer that we got from them is that it's being absorbed during their day-to-day operation.
It seems like that should be something that is made public, because this is a huge increase for families. You know, I have two daughters, and so if there's not going to be any kind of, you know, just myself and my two kids, I mean, we're over $200 to register. This is a huge deal. So like, I think that it's going to keep a lot of kids from, or a lot of parents from registering their kids, especially once they get to those older ages and they're like, well, you know, we're not quite as involved in things anymore. And that's where my kids are at, and that's some of the comments that I've already gotten. You know, my kids are all involved in sports and whatnot, and so, you know, this extra cost, they're going to, they're going to look at this like, you know, I think we're good. And they're going to back out of this. I really do think this is a really big deal.
It is. It is a big deal, Kara. And, you know, you heard the membership numbers increase that Jessica just talked about. We want to keep moving that direction. We don't want to go back. We want to keep moving in that direction. So, you know, the delegates are here. They are listening. And believe you me, we are going to vote accordingly.
Thank you.
I agree with Kara wholeheartedly, and that's something we discussed at our team meeting last night. We've kept our girls in, especially, I mean, I have a group of seventh graders, and I feel one reason why we've kept them going is because it's been low cost. I mean, I definitely utilize the Girl Experience Fund every year for my troop. I mean, many of them have benefited from it. And we, you know, sell product and we do, but it it rarely would have a negative impact. I mean, I've seen, on the other side, my son is involved in Scouts of America, and they're hurting terribly with their registration numbers due to the cost. I mean, it's like $111 a year. And I would really hate to see that. I feel great about what I bring to the table with my girls and our service unit, and this is not the right thing to do.
We'll hear you. Linda?
Yeah. Hey, Andrea. And gang, thanks for the comments that you've given so far. I do want to add a little bit to this. So GSUSA has communicated that they have run in a deficit for the last several years. So they are at that point that how do we fix that? Not only increasing the fees, which is what we're talking about tonight, but they also are spending more time. I believe, Loretta, give me a thumbs up if it's right. They also are focusing on more philanthropy at the GSUSA level. So they are focusing on other types of revenue. But like I said, it's at that point that they haven't increased their rates very much over many, many years, if you look at the long term. So that's kind of why they came back with explaining that we got to figure something out. And of course, membership was one of the ways to be able to help try to plug in that deficit that they've had for several years. They did go into some in-depth when they were explaining it, and some of that in-depth part of it is, is their cost, especially for things like security on the IT systems, so that they have secured data, that they're constantly having to ante up a little more to stay ahead of it so that data is protected and other things. So it's one of the things that I know they've looked at it. The nice part, I do have to say, I feel confident in some of that conversation, simply because Bonnie, who is the president of GSUSA, was the CEO and president of Girl Scouts of Missouri, East Side, whatever it's called, Eastern Missouri. Yeah, right. And we actually have worked with Bonnie through our council over the years. And I know she's just as dedicated with trying to keep as many girls in the program as possible, if not continue to grow us. So I know this wasn't easy for her to come and present to us, because she knows that this is going to be an impact. That's kind of why we wanted to talk with you guys is, you know, are there other ideas that we can come up with when the delegates go back that we can talk about? How, not only how this is going to affect it, but how maybe we could, as an organization, work around trying to help help bring that membership cost down? Does that mean doing, I don't know, another fundraiser that we do it internally as a council? Or something else? But I just, they're really, really pushing hard on membership increase, and they're pushing hard, doing all their research to say, just like Andrea said, this is what the Boy Scouts is charging, so we should be close to that, right? So any other additional comments are great. But I do know that, you know, they're looking at other ways, other philanthropic ways, especially to hit large corporations, to be able to step up and help sponsor the Girl Scout program at a big national level. I don't know how successful that's going to be, especially in the short run. Did I articulate that right, Loretta?
Yes, yes. We have several questions in the chat. So, you know, I'm going to do my best between myself and Linda and the delegates. We're going to do our best to try to answer them. Go ahead, Jessica.
Okay, I just wanted to jump in and start talking about those out loud, and though I see there's other hands up as well. So the first one is, where can we see the full proposal?
Oh, we could actually, could we pull that up, Ashley, right now? I know. We can pull that up for you. We want to give you as much time as you need. So Ashley, if you don't mind, go ahead and pull that up.
So while she's pulling that up, there's probably a couple of shorter ones that we can go ahead and answer. There's some comments in here that we'll definitely take note of. How much does GSUSA help individual councils?
That depends. It depends on the need, and we have a council consultant. Her name is Christine Gaines. And she checks on us and, you know, but it's not just the consultant. It's other things, like they may be working with Salesforce. I know they have, we have COO meetings, we have CFO meetings. So they're letting us know all the time, you know, what the strategic plan is, asking us if we need any help with stuff. So it depends on, it depends on, you know, what we're going through at the time. So I will say that this council, when we were going through a really rough time, and you all remember this, when our charter was being threatened, you all remember this, they spent a lot of time with me and Deanna. And so that's really kind of a hard question to, it depends on the needs of the council. And I would tell you, we are grateful. We are so grateful that we're not depending on GSUSA the way we used to, but there is other councils that are heavily dependent on GSUSA.
If I can add, if I can add just a few quick things, Loretta, to that, because one thing that I know that many of our members benefit from, the membership do also pays for our Girl Scout insurance. So if a girl is hurt or a volunteer is hurt or injured during an activity, that basic insurance that picks up whatever's left over, if you have medical insurance, that is covered by that national, that's covered by the national organization. And then, as Loretta mentioned, Salesforce, I just want to make sure everyone here knows what that is. That is our, basically our whole database. So all of our members' information, when we have interactions with each of you, the way we email each of you, the whole way we keep our members organized, GSE events, all of that is at the national level, and so they open that up and provide that to all of the councils across the country.
So let's take a look at that. The proposal is this, the proposal to be presented to the National Council. The National Board recommends annual membership dues to be $85 for girls and $45 for adults. That's the proposal. You could take it down, Ashley. That's the proposal. And you know, I can comment a little bit more, you know, when it comes to that proposal. Now, you heard me mention earlier that GSUSA provide councils revenue support for five years based on the percentage of the annual girl membership dues. If the National Council sets membership dues at councils, councils will, at $85, council will receive a percentage of the girl membership dues. So if it's, if it's set at $85 or above, and Ashley and Jessica, y'all help me out, if it's set at $85 or above, it will be 32%. If it's set at $75 to $84, it will be 30%. And if it's set at $65 to $74, the council will receive 25%. Now, with the dues at or above $65, GSUSA will create a membership scholarship fund up to $5 million. And I want to go on to say that councils may apply for funds if their incremental cost of financial assistance is more than the revenue supported. So with the Girl Scout membership dues of $85 or more, GSUSA will implement a discount on Girl Scout membership dues for the first two years. Now, let me go into that a little bit. Membership year discount dues in 2026 will be we 20%, making it $68 for that first year. For 2027, it will be 10%, making it $77. And then in 2028, And then in 2028, it will be the full $85. Now, if it's voted on anything below $85, the full amount will be implemented in 2026. Oh, thank you for putting that up.
So this slide, while Ashley has it up, answers the next question, actually. If we need to go through it, the question is, can you discuss what the yearly increases will give its members?
Can we just say that again, Jessica?
Can you discuss what the yearly increases will give its members? And the slide that Ashley has up on the screen right now breaks it down based on each price level, what will be provided at each price level?
So we can certainly send this slide out, I think, to everyone. Because I don't want to read all of it, but it does break it down. If it's 25, 45, 65, 85, 100. They're not proposing that 100, but I think they are proposing it. I know they are proposing 85.
Okay, we will send that out. The next question slash comment, why is, I kind of answered this already, but I just want to give an opportunity if there's anything else you want to add. Why is GS of USA needing to increase the membership fees instead of GS of USA looking for more product partnership and reaching out for corporate sponsors? And I imagine that also will be a comment that we take with us, or at least the national delegates will take to the meeting on the 19th.
Listen, we have, again, I want you all to hear me loud and clear. When we CEOs come together, we are asking every question that you guys are asking. And, you know, Linda mentioned Bonnie. Bonnie's very open with us in saying that they are reaching out to every partner that they can reach out to, to try to bring revenue in. You heard Linda talk about looking at more philanthropies and bringing more money in. She's looking at all of that. So we're just at a point right now where, you know, membership increases is we have to look at it. But we can vote on how much that will be.
The next question is, you already answered part of it. So how much money will come to councils from the new registration fee, which we just spoke about? What type of scholarships will be offered, which you also mentioned the $5 million Scholarship Fund? And I will say, in addition to that piece, Girl Scouts of Southern Illinois also has financial assistance for membership dues. I would continue, I would encourage you that if you need that, to request it. Loretta, if there's anything else you want to add?
No, that's, that's, you answered it very well. Thank you.
The next one is, have they looked at how much membership will decrease with this cost increase?
I will say, yes, they have. And they did give me that percentage. So they are looking at a decrease in membership. Because as you all said, and you know, it's going to be a decrease in membership. Not the way we want to go in Southern Illinois.
No.
The girls need, listen, the girls need this program way too bad, way too bad. And we want to make it affordable, as affordable as we can. So a membership decrease is not the way we want to go, not in this council.
There's a question about if financial assistance will still be available? And yes, absolutely. Does anyone know what the amount of the deficit is?
You know, Bonnie did give us that, and it was pretty, it was pretty bad. And I couldn't tell you those numbers right now, but she did give us the deficit. And it looked pretty scary. Linda, do you have any idea?
Yeah, I'm racking my brain too, to see if I can, yeah, I don't remember any of the numbers. But I also know that it's been for several years running. It's not been something that's just been the last year, and now they're trying to make up for it. So, you know, it's one of those things that the numbers have gotten bigger every year. And I can't come up with it. But I was surprised at that number two, is how big it is. So maybe we could find that at some point in some of our notes.
The next, there's a couple of other great comments, which again, we'll take those and make sure all of our delegates have that to take to that meeting and share with GSUSA. The next question, though, on the chat log is, if you could talk about what happened to the $84.5 million donation to Girl Scouts from McKinsey Scott?
Sure, I can tell you that the $84.5 million, this council did not receive any of that money. And I think you all know that. Several other councils have. I don't know, I cannot explain to you how they picked those other councils to receive that. But, and I know GSUSA got a portion of it. What happened to it? I know councils that were hurting really used it for what they needed to use it for. We are fortunate that we, we made some hard decisions. And right now, we are reaping the benefits of those hard decisions that we made.
The next question in the chat log is something we kind of answered, but I'll just reconfirm it for you. How will girls receive the financial assistance from GSUSA? So they haven't confirmed the process because they still have to vote on the membership cost. And once that vote is counted and we know what that price will be, then we'll see if we are then going to be able to, if GSUSA will be creating that $5 million Scholarship Fund to councils, is how it reads. And so what we typically do from any funder that gives us money for financial assistance is we just run it through our system. So if you go in and register for a membership, there's an opportunity there to ask for financial assistance. And we process it behind the scenes and activate your membership. I don't see that being any different, but of course, we'll let you know if that changes. Let's see.
And I just want to say that many, you know, many councils are sharing your frustration. A lot of councils are sharing your frustrations. And it's hitting them at a time where they are not, a lot of councils aren't financially where they need to be. And so we hear you loud and clear, and you're not alone, you're not by yourself. There is lots of councils dealing with talking about this. We don't know how the vote's going to go.
A lot of, again, really great comments. I know we can echo a lot of those. And so the next question I see in the log is, are we saying that if the suggested $85 membership is not voted in, and we recommend to go lower, we can't slowly then increase that? Why is it all or nothing? It seems like there could be a little more negotiation.
If it's lower than, what did I say, 85 or 65? I cannot remember.
If it's 65.
If it's lower than 65, yeah, it's going to hit right away. If it's 85, it will be in two-year increments.
There's a question about the chart, about where registration fees are being used. Says, looking at the chart, it seems like registration fees are being used on stock market. Is that accurate? If so, if our portfolio was underperforming, what is being done about it? Great question.
We can take that back. Absolutely.
Is there a way to get ideas to GSUSA and they listen? I've seen, and then there's a comment about, you know, everyone on social media across the country talking about the things that they do need, things like fixing digital cookie, fixing BTK, et cetera.
Yes, there is a way. And when it comes to this red voting for this membership increase, your delegates are here to take that information back. When it comes to the other things, your CEO, your COO, and your board chair, we echo everything that you guys are telling us. If you're frustrated about something, believe you me, we get in those meetings and we stay there for a long time. And we echo your frustrations.
Okay, the next, the last question I see in the chat log, and then we can jump to those that still have their hands raised. Thank you for your patience as we walk through each of these. If GSUSA is anticipating membership dropping with a proposed increase, how will this affect staffing needs at the local council level?
Well, we are, we are dedicated to make sure that you are supported in every possible way that you need to be supported. Now, the Board of Directors understands that it takes staff, it takes volunteers, it takes all of us together, working together, to ensure the success of the Girl Scouts of Southern Illinois. So I want to say to you, we don't want any of you to feel like you are going liking. And we will be looking at that when it comes to our council to make sure that your needs are being met in this council. Linda, I don't know if you want to mention anything, or talk about that at all, Jessica, but we are dedicated to making sure that your needs are supported.
Right. And I want to say the other part of that is, we are also dedicated to make sure that we stay as financially healthy as possible. You know, so if we have a large increase or a decrease would be nice, but a decrease in membership because of that, you know, it's not going to be financially feasible for us to continue to have the staff that we currently have. We'd sure like to have that, but again, we are going to be financially responsible to adjust that if need be, if we do have a large decrease in membership. So it's that balancing act to make sure that we give you the program that we promised to give and that we want the girls to experience. But it's also being financially responsible with that. And we're lucky at our council level that we've, we're where we are financially. We are very lucky with that. But we've definitely been on our toes, making sure that we're staying on top of it, making sure that we're doing the best decisions we possibly can, both financially and organizationally for the membership.
All right. Any other questions?
Hi Jen, I see your hands raised. You can go ahead and unmute and join the conversation.
Hi, so a couple of things. In 2020, we, as delegates at National Convention, approved that the National Board can raise the membership costs up to a certain percentage without coming to the delegates. So with that, I believe it was 25%. I do not remember, and I do not have it right in front of me, the percentage. Was it 25?
Yes.
So, so no matter what, I believe whether this is passed or not, it's going to go up to at least $30, which would be 25% increase. Or a 20% increase would be $30. So at most, it would be like 31, I did the math. So we're looking at an increase no matter what. They're coming to us and, you know, saying, well, we want to increase more. We can counter their proposal of $85 with another number. So, you know, it can either be voted down that we are not increasing, but more than the 25%. Or we could counter with a different number. So, you know, I don't want to speak for the other delegates, but, you know, I would kind of like to have maybe, you know, an idea of where that comfort level is if we were to make a counter offer.
Jennifer, I'm glad to. I'm glad you're talking about that because she's absolutely right. And the delegates are here to listen to what you are asking us to take back. Because it's what you all, you all have to be comfortable with what we take back. So is that 65? Is it 55? Is it 75? You all tell me. But as Jennifer said, it's going to go up regardless. She mentioned that, and it's going to go up regardless, but we just need to, we need to counter. Jennifer, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, speaking as Jennifer and not Jennifer the delegate for a moment, I honestly think, like my gut reaction when I read this, when we, when the delegates got the email and I saw the numbers, my honest opinion when I saw this was they are asking for them, they're shooting for the moon, you know, are shooting for the stars, hoping to just reach the moon. Like they have asked for more, knowing that it will probably be countered. So that was my gut reaction, whether or not that's the truth. But that was my gut reaction, so, you know. We know that it's going to be 30 no matter what. Like that, numbers wise and what is in the rules already, we know it's going to be 30. So I would even go lower than what Loretta was saying and say 40. Or 50. I mean, 50 would be 100% increase, and I think that would be too much of a shock for a lot of families. But that's just, you know, I teach numbers, so I'm just looking at the numbers and I just think a lower number would be better received.
Come on, we want to hear from you all, so. Do you have a number in your head, Carol?
Can you guys put a poll up so you guys can get accurate numbers of how we feel? Like if it's 35, you know, you can put a poll up and get a vote right here. We've got, how many people? 70 on here?
72, yep.
Yeah, Loretta, I'm happy to, I'm happy to run a poll. I've got one ready.
Okay, if you want to do that, let's do it. Shall we start with Jennifer? 50?
There are some, there are quite a few people in the chat, just so you see Loretta wanting to start more around 40 and up from there, if we're going to have options. I see 35, 35, 40, 45, so just so you have that information, Ashley.
And all of this, you know, the delegates will have this information because this is what you're.
It should be launching now.
So here we go. We can submit your answers right now. Go ahead and you can go ahead and submit it right now, 35, 40, 50, 60, 65, 70.
So while people are voting, do you want to go ahead and take Elena's question?
Sure. Hi, this is Sarah. Actually, Elena and I are together because we're both delegates for 57. So I just wanted to say, like, you have to look at scouts equivalent to athletics for kids that do athletics. I mean, you're not going to put your kid in athletic sport for less than 50. I do understand the increase, but a jump from 25 to 85 is pretty significant. And the other thing is, yeah, you're getting more competitive with Boy Scouts. But I'll tell you the truth, I have two Eagle Scouts. An Eagle Scout is a lot easier to rank, to achieve than a Girl Scout Gold. And it's also more recognized than the Gold. So if they're going to try to get up there close to the Boy Scouts, they're going to have to make some adjustments to make the Gold easier and more recognizable across the board. I see Marian shaking her head, but it's true. That Eagle Scout is easy, easy to earn compared to this Girl Scout Gold. So you're just going to push more of our girls into that Boy Scout world, which is not where I personally would want them to be, my daughter to be, and that's why she's here, but.
Yeah, you know, I really feel like we need I, 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 I really feel like we need to, you know, vote where we are comfortable at, you know, uh. Because lowering our standards to the Boy Scouts is, is, isn't, isn't something I'm a fan of, you know, if it make it easier. I mean, when I, when I look at all the statistics and, and, and the, the people and, and the, the leaders that we produce in this program in Girl Scouts, you know, uh, it, it speaks for itself. Our, our success speaks for itself. And it, it, it's because those girls are truly making a difference in the community. And I'm not saying that the boys aren't doing it, but we, we make sure that our girls, whatever they're doing is sustainable. And it is, it continues on and on and on. So. We just need to take another route and say, we're going to vote this down to 50, 75, 45, whatever, and, 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 and see if we can go that route first.
Okay, it looks like we have Liza up next. Liza, I hope you got pronunciation right.
Yes, it's Liza. Um, I'm with Service Unit 522. We're Charleston and really just Oakland right now. About 26% of our families in Charleston live below the poverty line. We had 98 girls last year in our service unit. Half of them were on financial aid. Going up to $85 is just untenable for us. We would lose, either we would lose all of our girls or they would all go on financial aid, because I mean technically they can right now. Because the, you know, the barometer that you guys use free lunch, our entire town qualifies for free lunch and breakfast. And I'm, I'm with it for the $50 I get. We need, we need to raise it. I have been doing Girl Scouts with my scouts since 2010. And it really has not changed since that time. I, and I don't think it's crazy to go up to 50, but I really, really just do not want it to. I mean, it would be so hard to sell this to my parents because we're already selling a, a cookie price raise after already having a cookie price raise. Our vests are $55 and, you know, I mean, it just, it's. And I mean, honestly, like the journeys we have to do, they haven't been changed since the new badges and stuff came out. And we're trying to sell this new, you know, we're trying to sell Girl Scouts when, and, and making them pay more money when we don't, we aren't giving them the return. Um, I would like to see maybe that if we're trying to get more parents involved, because I definitely think as a person that works with volunteers on a regular basis, having them have to pay $50 just to help out is a lot as well. I think maybe we need to look into being less for, for the parents because we're asking them to, to do more. And I know that's, none of this is a question. It just, I didn't feel like I could leave this meeting without making sure that Eastern Coles County with, with all their kids that, that already need help, didn't have their voice heard.
Yeah, no, no, thank you. Thank you so much. And, you know, we put a poll up there for, for the girl membership. We haven't put anything up for the, for the adult. Um, so, um, Ashley, um, if you wanted to go ahead and do that, is, uh, do, do you guys not want to vote on that? I, I need to know.
While you're thinking, anyone who wasn't able to view the poll that was initially put up, Ashley had posted some directions. I want to make sure everyone saw that. If you feel comfortable enough just dropping your vote in the comment section, she'll make sure she tabulates that as well.
And Jess, also people can click on the more icon in the bottom right and go to polls slash quizzes.
Thank you. We're seeing yes, vote on adult, adult costs, please. Several people.
Have we, we, we're discussed kind of girl, and I think most of you are hitting in, 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 in the middle of 45, 40 to 50, I think is what I'm hearing. Um, let's talk about adults. Well, let's, let's talk to me. I, I like to call on people. And, and I'm looking at Debbie Parker, but.
We have a couple of hands up. I just want to make sure you see those. Kathy Mills has her hand up and she may have a question of something other than adult because her, her hand's still up from our previous conversation. Yep.
Go ahead, Kathy. I'm sorry.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. I appreciate the time that you're giving us to this. Um, there was a, a comment that was raised in our leadership meeting that we had just the other night. When we raise these costs for the girls, the expectations of the parents will also drastically increase for the leaders. We are volunteers. And so if a parent has decided that they are going to have to choose between a sport or Girl Scouts, they are going to have much higher expectations on the volunteers. So I, that's not my point. Somebody else in our leader meeting brought that up, but I thought it was a great and excellent point. That I don't think the leaders, maybe the parents don't even understand how much time and effort goes into keeping a troop alive.
Here you.
Thank you for sharing that from your leader meeting. Um, Cara Cutler?
I'm just thinking about like all of the, my own personal money and my time. I mean, it's hours and hours, you all know this. Hours of our own time on this. And to put more fees onto the adults that want to be a part of it, I think you'll also see a decrease in your adult help. Um, you know, okay, well, I have to pay more money and I have to also give all this time. And so they, people will back out. People will pick sports over Girl Scouts for sure. I don't, I mean, I, I, I 100% back. I, I get that we got to raise prices. Prices raise on everything. I get it. Um, but you know, raising all these prices so high, like 85, 45 for adults, I think is still ridiculous, um, when we're giving our time for free.
Well, and you know, Carrie, you know, volunteers are the meat and potatoes of our organization. We need our volunteers. And otherwise we wouldn't be here. So you all put in there, keep it at 25. If that's what you want it, put it in there. And I, you know, I was going to say this at the end of, 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 of the meeting tonight, but at the end of the word, community is unity. And I, I want our council to be unified and, and we need to push this forward together. And, and if it's keep it in that 25, we need to push that forward together.
Um, I'm not sure who is on this screen that has their hand up, but it says 786579. So you are good to unmute and join our conversation, please. If you are speaking, you are still muted. Okay, we'll come back to that person. Emily, oh, wait, I see an unmute. There you go.
I'm 713775. I don't know if that's me. I raised my hand, but um, I would just like to say that, um, I work in a school where everyone receives a free lunch. And, um, as a mom who's been a leader in BSA, who has a female Eagle Scout and a Girl Scout Gold Trifecta, um, that sees BSA more in this area and our service unit is way smaller than it used to be. Girl Scouts is strong in the school that I work in because it's affordable for these girls with the free reduced lunch. And I love hearing the little girl in my classroom talk about her robotics team that she just joined and the girls that really need this program. And if they, I know that things have to go up, I understand that, but if they raise it up so high, I'm afraid that the girls that really need this, that can't afford to do some of these other things, won't be able to afford to do these things. And we're also like, my daughter has special needs. She's going to be a young lady pretty soon and, um, need help with special needs and Girl Scouts, um, and BSA and, you know, organizations like that have always been there for her. And again, I know things need to go up. I just worry, you know, if it goes up too much, how's that going to affect these girls that really need the program? On the other hand, I would love to say thank you because one thing that I think that's awesome that Girl Scouts does is if you earn your trifecta, they do offer that lifetime membership once they turn 18. And I think that's very awesome. So thank you for that.
Any other questions? Hands.
We have Emily Myers. Was her hand up?
Yeah, mine is more of a comment. I think if we were to, I, I understand having to raise the registration fee because it has been this way for a long time. But if we were to raise them like $5 a year, parents are still going to say, oh, it's just $5. Oh, it's just $5 and not think about it as much to just drop our girl enrollment down. Because if we jump 10, $20 at one time, their enrollment's just going to drop. Because they're just going to see that huge gap. But if we were to do it at five per year and just do that five or, you know, 20% every year or whatever, they're not going to notice as much and it will keep enrollment up.
We definitely will echo that. We will definitely echo that.
Because I'm afraid, sorry, I'm afraid with, um, you know, they know that enrollment's going to drop when we jump it that high, that they, that it's going to be worse than if we jump it a little bit and keep more girls in for the overall amount of money coming in.
Thank you for that, Emily. Um, Alicia, see your comment about questions about restructuring and, and, um, restructuring councils a while ago, about almost a decade ago, in hopes that it would help have a metropolitan city in every council. Um, and that was supposed to help generate more income, um, from a donor standpoint. I see Jen's comment just echoing back like that is to help local councils. Um, but GS USA is the one that will be getting these membership fees, but I want you to know, we see your comments. Um, there's a question about how, and I, I don't know that we have an answer to this tonight, but how GS USA can create the 5 million aid package to offset the fee increase, but still have to raise fees to just break even. I'm sure that is something that will be taken to that October 19th, but Loretta, please feel free to.
Yes, and, uh, we discussed this and, uh, they, they're still working on how that is going to look. So it is something that we are going to be taking back and getting back with you all on that. Okay, what, what's the poll saying? Um, uh, are we, are we ready, Ashley? Are not quite ready? We're ready?
Yeah, I can share it.
Okay. So it looks like the majority said keep it at 25. 2% says 45 and 8% says 40, 35, uh, 15% and 30, 25%. So, um, the delegates will, will take this back and, um, that's the way we'll be voting. Go ahead, Debbie. I was waiting for you.
I knew you were. I'm sorry. I was not at home and couldn't get on, on my phone. So I am not for sure what they decided with the, with the girls. But I'm going to echo what they said. In the two counties that are over here, I can't imagine that the parents are going to choose Girl Scouts over sports. If we increase this, we keep these girls because it's affordable. And if we don't keep it affordable, we're going to lose girls. They will, they will choose sports because they only see the advantage to sports unless we as leaders teach the girls as they are coming up, the advantages of staying in Girl Scouts. And the things that they can look forward to and have the opportunities for, they're not going to know, but you have to include the parents on those conversations too.
And Debbie, what I'm hearing you say is not that the girls don't want to be in Girl Scouts. They're just not being able to afford it, is what you're saying.
Right, and, and. I mean, Loretta, honestly, look at your financial aid. If you're going to, you know, if we're going to raise all these, and I know that it's a a GS USA thing. We, we have had this conversation and you know where I stand on this. But if we are going to raise those, the financial aid for the council is going to be detrimental. In all counts, in all councils, I feel, and in all, all service units, they're all going to go to high financial aid. We already are high financially.
Yes.
But it'll get worse.
Yes, and, 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 you know, I, I mentioned earlier, Debbie, that, you know, other councils are feeling, they're feeling what we are feeling. And I am so grateful of a great Board of Directors that is always looking to make sure that this council is doing what it needs to do to stay financially sound. Now with that said, many, many CEOs have said, if we are going to have to, if the price is going to be raised to 85, we wish that wouldn't happen because we were going to implement a council service fee. Now, I will be honest with you all. Couple of years ago, we entertained that. We talked about it, this council. But we don't have to, we didn't have to do it. We have figured it out. And like I said, Board of Directors that is just on top of things and thank goodness, you know, and doing what we need to do and being transparent with you all. But now a lot of councils, a lot of councils are looking at GS USA prices increased and we're going to have to, on top of that, have a council service fee of $30. Because the council service fee can be as high as $85 as well. So we need to focus on Southern Illinois. What we need to do to make sure that those girls that want to be in Girl Scouting are in Girl Scouting. And like you said, Debbie, it's not that they don't want to be in Girl Scouting, but it's like, we're not going to be able to afford Girl Scouting. We have to figure that out here because I don't want to lose any girls here. And especially me, myself, coming from a rural area, born and raised in a rural area. I especially have a passion for those girls. Jennifer, go ahead. Did I mandible?
Hey, thanks for listening to me. Um, so, um, I'm so new into this program and I feel so, um, passionate about the work. And when I have been, um, uh, meeting with my service unit leader managers and, and troop leaders, um, and when we talk about the money, um, what I'd say to them and correct me if I'm not right, um, that I want to bring, um, Girl Scouts to them and I want it to work for them, um, as well as it can. You know, I don't want them to feel like they have to, um, just pay for it. I want to figure out what they need to, um, to bring it to them. So, um, I don't know. That's just an open-ended, uh, thought process for me. Um, that's just kind of where I am right now. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Jennifer. Um, yes, absolutely. We definitely want to meet those girls where they are at and, and do whatever we can to, to, to do this. And again, I want us to focus on this council. GS USA dues are gonna, they're gonna raise, but we have to come together, as I said earlier. At the end of the word, community is unity. We have to come together and say, what are we gonna do to make sure that we don't lose any girls in Southern Illinois? What are we gonna do to make sure that we don't lose any girls in Southern Illinois? So, um, go ahead, Debbie. Go ahead. Go ahead, Debbie.
So I'm sorry, Loretta. So I have a question and this may have been a question that was already asked. If they vote no, if as a, as all the delegates go in and they vote no for this increase. Can council make an increase without the vote, without a vote? Without a delegate approval of any size?
Well, when you say council, you mean to stay in the council, Debbie?
No, I, no. I mean, I'm sorry, can GS USA go ahead and make it increase? Without a positive vote?
Absolutely, twenty-five percent.
Okay.
Twenty-five percent. Jen, Jen talked about that a little bit earlier.
I'm sorry.
That would be like thirty dollars or thirty-one dollars or so. So, yeah, they absolutely can do it because that's what we voted on when we were at the national convention.
Okay.
Uh, there is a question, there's a couple of questions in the chat log that have popped in. So I make sure I catch them all. Will we be changing the level of financial aid? Families not with free and reduced lunch. Need the help if it is eighty-five dollars. So, um, Loretta, I don't mind answering this.
Go ahead.
Right now, we don't just look at free and reduced lunches when it comes to membership financial aid. If someone needs financial assistance. Um, if we have questions, we will ask for additional information, but that's not something that we need to verify to give them financial aid at this time for membership. Um, but yes, I hear you that they definitely, people who may not qualify for free and reduced lunch may. Need assistance at that higher level. Um, there is another question about financial aid and it is, um. Go back down here. Is there an opportunity? I think Alicia had asked it, so let me just find her message. Um, is there a possibility of there being multiple levels of financial assistance for girls? Not all or nothing, like in the past. This would help the troops pay out of cookie money. Alicia, we just had this conversation actually today. Loretta and I, we were in a conversation talking about that because right now, how the GS USA system is set up. Um, it is all or nothing, right? Check a box and it's either you get it or you don't and. Ninety-nine point nine-nine percent of the time you get it. Um, but we're talking about today, hoping that we can also, whatever the amount is that is passed eventually. Um, we hope that GS USA will hear the councils who are saying, we need more options in that online registration system. So that we can, you know, give girls opportunity if they do wanna pay with some of their cookie money or with money they've earned elsewhere. That they have that option and then it's not all or nothing. So we'll definitely take that forward. And there was also a question about when will we, when will they know or when will we be able to share the results from the meeting? I don't know if you have that or Ashley, if either of you will know.
Um, they will be coming out with communication the day, two days after the meeting wraps up. Um, the meeting is October nineteenth. It is a weekend, um, so it's gonna be an all-day session Saturday. If the discussion continues, it will go into Sunday. Um, so those delegates have blocked off that entire weekend. Um, hopefully, we, we, or GS USA will send out some communication by Monday. Um, to councils, um, and then we will push out that communication to you all. Um, as soon as we know. I mean, of course, Loretta and the delegates will know Sunday, you know, during the meeting. Um, but it'll be a quick turnaround.
Yes, you will know. And, and let me tell you. We would probably spend all of Saturday, and, and I'm telling you, if you wanna see democracy at its best. Come to one of these meetings because people have questions, questions and more questions and they challenge. And some of you may have been to some, some, um, um, national conventions, but, uh, it, it, it will be challenged. So we're gonna be spending that weekend at home. Listening and voting. Listen ladies, I, 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 I hear you. I hear all of you loud and clear. And, um, which is why I'm gonna go into my next session talking about, um, cookies. But, uh, we will echo and, and I wanna pause here. I know Jennifer mentioned is if there's any more delegates that have anything that they'd like to say. I'd like to give them that, that opportunity. But, uh, we'll be voting accordingly. Um, wanna pause here and ask Linda, she has anything, you know, else that you would like to say when it comes to membership? Otherwise, I'm gonna move on to the next topic on the agenda.
Oh, uh, I do also wanna reiterate that, uh, we'll take all the notes out of the, um, chat as well. And include that because that's been running pretty hot with, uh, really good suggestions, um, and comments. So we'll be incorporating that also when our delegates get the, um, rundown of how the meeting went and the outcome from it. So, but thank you all for all of your comments. We, we hear you. We, um, we, we hope that, um. It goes in our direction and not in GSU's direct, GS USA's direction, but, um, we're, we're here for you. And, um, if there's anything that else that we can do, um, we will be glad to carry that. Uh, Loretta and I have a board chair CEO, uh, convention in Detroit coming up, um, later this month. So we'll be happy to carry that with us when we go there as well.
Okay, thank you, Linda. The next thing on the agenda is the, uh, product program updates. And, um, you, you know, I talked to you all about, the board is always looking at our council and making sure that, that. That they are being proactive and making sure that our council is sustainable. Well, you all know that I've always tried to be transparent and, and everything that we do. In June of, uh, two thousand and twenty-four, Little Brownie Baker, that's our baker, our cookie rep. Cookie company, I'm sorry. In, in June of two thousand and twenty-four, Little Brownie Baker sent the council a new contract to sign for the next three years. They explained to us that as a result of inflation, they will be increasing their rate thirteen percent. Over the previous contract. Now, knowing we just had a cookie price increase last year. Our intent was not to raise the price again. However, after several attempts to balance the two thousand and twenty-four budget. The Board of Directors approved to increase the cookie price to seven dollars per box. To be passed on to our customers. Now, out of this increase, this is one of, one of the things that I, I really want you all to hear. Out of this increase of a dollar more per box, girls will be receiving an additional twenty cent per package based on pricing. It could be higher in certain situations. Now, when we looked at this, well, that's about the time we heard that there may be a membership increase. At the time, we didn't know how much it was, but we were hoping that this could kinda help with that. Again, our board is taking a proactive approach and making sure our council is sustainable. And I'm gonna open it up for questions for that, if you guys have any questions on that.
I don't see.
I don't see.
You don't see any questions?
I don't see any questions. Or Elena has her hand up now.
Go ahead, Elena.
Sorry. Do we know, since we are bordering, um, Missouri, do we know if their council has raised their prices as well?
We do not know that it, that they are from, from, and from what I understand, you know. I don't know what other councils are doing. I do know that some councils are, but what other councils are doing, I really don't know. If Missouri or not. Katie, I don't know if you have heard anything, but, uh, we really don't know. And I can tell you, um, m- many CEOs are talking about it. Because of everything that's happening right now. Because of everything that's happening right now. And we, we are always that council that will say, you know what, we're gonna be the lead on this, but I can guarantee you. Next year, if they are not raising it this year, they're gonna see it next year. And some of you may, may say, well, why don't we do it next year? If the price of, of registration goes up to eighty-five. We're gonna end up paying sixty-five and next year it will be seventy or whatever, seventy-seven or something like that. I always say, I can teach you a lot of things, but I cannot teach you timing. The timing is right for us to do it this, now.
Loretta, it's Katie.
Katie, go ahead.
Um, I do know Central and Eastern, Central Illinois and Eastern will not be going up this year. But there is major talks, um, for coming up years. I know many councils, there's many councils going up. To six dollars and then seven dollars for, um, specialties. So there are a bunch of councils doing another price increase this year. We are not alone. Um, but I would see more talks next year on the surrounding councils.
Now, if that eighty-five dollars, so if, if, if that's approved. It's a cookie price increase next year and it's seventy-seven dollars plus the cookie price. And I just feel like this is the right, this is the time. The, the board is absolutely right. The timing is right.
Okay, a couple of questions that have popped into the question log. Um, have you taken into effect, um, cookie sales decreasing? Two years ago, buyers would give us twenty dollars and get four boxes. Now they hand us a twenty and you get only two boxes. And I. See Linda, Linda shaking her head and I don't know if you're ready to respond or, or, Loretta?
I, I can respond to that. You know, as I said before, and I did a little video for you all because Donna Erin asked me to do a little video. And I did a little video for you all and, um, the, the mark on department is gonna be sharing that video pretty soon. But I talked about the importance of supporting a program that is going to produce the best leaders. That, that we need in this, in this world. And I talked to them, I talked about, uh, when you buy a box of Girl Scout cookies, you're not paying for those cookies. You're not. It's just a thank you that we're giving back to those people that are, are, are purchasing those cookies. It's a thank you to say, thank you for your seven dollar donation. We appreciate you. So here's a box of cookies. Because, um, you are supporting the Girl Scouts of Southern Illinois. And we really have to focus on our program when it comes to, is it seven dollars a box or is it? Six dollars a box. You know, we pay for a lot of things and we know it doesn't cost twenty dollars. For, uh, the package of Boy Scout popcorn. But we're paying for the program. Because we believe in what they do. We believe in what you leaders are doing with these girls. I remember, and I'm gonna tell you this story. I remember when I was in North Dakota, spent twenty-six years of my life in North Dakota and I was working with Girl Scouts. And it was very cold. And at the time, we had raised the cookies to three dollars a box. And people were complaining about three dollars a box. And those girls, they would turn away. And I remember walking up to this man and I said, sir, you're not paying three dollars for this box of cookies. This little girl is just saying, thank you for your donation. And the man looked at me and you know what he said? Loretta, when you put it like that, keep the whole ten. Keep the whole ten. And I said, well, you can get two more boxes because he said, I don't want it. He said, because when I make a donation to, and I was waiting in, in North Dakota, when I was in North Dakota, that was in, 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 in the, in the nineties, I'm telling my age. But, you know, i- it was way back in that day. He said, when you put it like that, when I give charity, I give at least twenty-five dollars. He said, keep the whole ten. So again, focus on the program. Focus on what these girls are getting out of the program. And we've asked the girls to be ready to tell their story when people are asking them, what are you gonna do with this money? And I'm pleading with you volunteers. Have those girls prepare to tell that story.
The next question I see, Loretta, is, um, is there any retracting the seven dollars?
I'll take it. I'll take it. Um, here's what, what happened when we were sitting down doing the budget. And, um, obviously, we have to make some assumptions in that budget and part of that budget was making sure that we were not putting our, our. Council into the red, um, with what we've got budgeted. So, um, we ran several different scenarios, meaning, hey, let's do the special, just the specialty boxes. Hey, let's, you know, let's, uh, see if we could do it without it. And we just couldn't, we couldn't do it. But we were under a deadline. And the deadline, because it has to go back to the, the cookie manufacturer as well as their marketing piece that does the marketing for us. Um, there was a deadline. So the deadline, um, the board, uh, voted without a board meeting. We actually did it outside of a board meeting zone because we had to come up against the deadline. So, um, with the deadline has passed, so we can't change it at this point. It's seven dollars a box. But when we looked at that, one of the questions I saw in the chat was. When you looked at that, did you already plan that we won't sell as many boxes? And yes, we reduced that in the, in the budget simply because. We know we're gonna sell less boxes because of the cost in, uh, uh, increase. We don't like that. We don't, definitely don't like it, but it, it's just what happens when there's price increase. And our cookie supplier rep has helped us address that, um, with giving us some, uh, some ideas of numbers. Um, what, so we tried to look at it at different ways. It just made the most sense for us to increase it to seven dollars a box across the board. The nice part about that is, is that now we can give more to the troop. Um, because of that, um, there's more in there that you guys as a troop will get. And I know if we figured out even with the reduction in the number of cookies that we potentially will think that we'll sell because of the price increase. Is that we're still pushing out to the troop. It was like a hundred and sixty thousand dollars more that goes to the troops. Um, if we, even with the reduction in the cookie, uh, sales, we're still gonna be pushing that much out so that. Because we understand that you guys at the troop level are also feeling the increase in fees. So we felt that that was a win-win, that we could push more money out down to the troop level through that increase. Um, and, and that's kinda hopefully answers some of the questions that I saw in the chat.
Okay.
Loretta and Linda, can I add something real quick about the comment about the other bakeries? Um, so just so, Little Brownie and ABC, they're, we're not, they're not. Neither of them's getting, doing better with price. So ABC's councils are getting the same price increases as Little Brownie is. It's the same across the board. It supplies, it's agencies, it all goes into that. So, the same cocoa that ABC uses is the same cocoa Little Brownie uses. It's the same price increase across the board. So, um, a- again, another bakery isn't gonna make a difference, um.
Well, I, I will, I, I will say this, Katie, and, and Katie will agree with me. And, and if any of you have experienced ABC Baker versus, uh, Little Brownie program. Little Brownie program is outstanding. Their program materials is outstanding versus ABCs. Um, we, it, it's just, it's just better. Uh, so, um, I'm, I'm happy to be a, a Little Brownie Baker Council.
Sorry, guys, I'm having some technical difficulties with my microphone, so I'm talking through my phone and muting my speakers when I need to. So it's a fine dance over here, but, um, there are a couple of questions that are all around, um, you know, our contract. And if we are in a contract, are we locked into a price that we pay for the cookies during that contract time? And I, I don't, that, I can answer that for, for, for those several questions. Um, we do have a three-year contract that we sign with our baker. In that though, is the caveat that because the increase in the ingredients that are used to sell the cookies. It can go all over the place, that they do have the ability to raise the price that we pay for cookies anytime within that contract. Um, what's your anticipated reduction in sales? And also, it's what are the, um, how many packages do we need to sell? To meet the budget requirements for twenty-twenty-five? Can you answer that as well? We are, we, this past cookie season, um, our girls sold about eight hundred and thirty-three thousand packages. Our goal, that's, and what we built the. about eight hundred and thirty-three thousand packages. Our goal, that's, and what we built the budget on, is seven hundred and ninety thousand packages. Um, the next question has to do with new labor laws uh going into effect, and says, how many of, will the new labor laws going into effect next year affect many workers at Little Brownie Baker, causing another increase next year? Since it sounds like we already signed a contract with them, and then asking how many years is our contract for? And that's three years. This will be, I believe, our second year in that three-year contract.
Any others?
And, um, let's see here. Just some comments about loving Little Brownie Bakers and understanding about inflation, looking for other ways to find, um, finding ways for us to survive as a council. Um, looking for more local fundraisers so that girls aren't reliant on girls selling cookies, I guess, from the council level, so.
Yes.
Um, do you want to talk about that, Loretta?
Yes, we are looking at doing fundraisers in other areas, and uh, I will tell you that our board chair is a fan of that. She wants it more, more fundraising in, in, in other areas. And, and I have talked to some people in, in other areas about doing fundraisers, so we're definitely looking at that. You know, I always say, uh, uh, adult rate-generated income is very, very important to this council. You guys have heard me say that when I walked in the door here. And, and we shouldn't always, we, we, we can't depend on these girls all the time to, to hold us up. So we are looking at, at um, um, doing fundraisers. We, we, we're gonna be doing one. I know we just did one in Marion this past year. We are gonna be doing something in, in, in Debbie's neck of the woods, Debbie's parking neck of, neck of the woods sometime. So yes, we, we are looking at even more fundraisers um outside of our council. And with that, um, I'm gonna move on. And again, I, I, I just want you all to know just how much I appreciate all of you and the work that you do. Um. I, I'm gonna give you a finance um update, and um, it's, it's like every year, we, we, we do better, but we're not, we're not there yet. As, as we promised to keep you all up to date on where we are with our finances at every town hall meeting that we have. Now, GSUSA requires our council to have at least six months of reserves, and we are well within that. We have come a long way, y'all, to get to where we are with our finances. Now, although we are ending the year at a deficit, and I, I've talked to the CFO uh this week, and, and it is going to be under two hundred thousand. But I also want you to note that last year, we ended the year with about two hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit. The year before that, it was more than that. So we are moving, and Linda will say it, in the right direction. And let me tell you, she's always on me. We got, we got it. This is not the direction. We want to keep moving in the right direction, Loretta. We are dedicated to balancing the budget to the best of our abilities, doing better than the years before. I also want to note that our operational goal is to balance the operational budget without a deficit. Now, moving on, I want to talk to you all about something else. First of all, let me ask, is there any questions on that? Moving to uh, moving on, I want to talk to you guys about um, uh, Camp Torquay. I know many of you are there this weekend, and I've heard some great things. And Jessica and I got an email from a wonderful volunteer, just talking about uh, the, the program that was out there and, and just how, what a great weekend they had. I want to give you an overall view of what we have been doing at Camp Torquay. Now, because some of you, um, we, because of some of our very, very dedicated donors, we were able to add new cabins to Camp Torquay. Look at that. Ashley's showing them right now. She's sharing these photos. We are partnering with Madison County, and we are making walkways accessible, sidewalks accessible. We are um getting more partners to work with us to make sure that Camp Torquay is the camp that you would like to see. Now, many of you are like, Loretta, when can we get in there? Now, hold your horses because we, we gotta make sure that we have everything ready before we can have you go there and say, I wanna, I want this cabin, and I wanna book this cabin. So, so just hold on, because we gotta still put furniture in, and we got a lot of stuff to put in. But as soon as we have it ready, we'll put it out to you all. But isn't that beautiful? Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. Now, moving on, uh, so we have, we, we, that's four new cabins, and, and the name of the area, we've already given it a name. Um, you all, and it's gonna be called The Pines. So we, you know, we got Pumpkin Patch. We're gonna have The Pines, kind of like that. Um, and uh, several people have donated um cabins. Um, Amaran, Amaran has two cabins. We'll call it the Amaran Cabin at The Pines. So uh, we'll just keep on building up and, and making sure that the girls have the camp that they have been asking for. We got a lot more things that we'd like to do. Moving on to our annual meeting, this is something, annual meeting is gonna be a little bit different. It's gonna still be in April, but it's gonna be a little bit later. Um, it's gonna be April the twenty-seventh at the Doubletree in Mount Vernon. And it's going to be in conjunction with the recognition of excellence. And it's gonna be happening after the recognition of excellence. Now, several of you have said to me, Loretta, we kind of miss having the volunteers be recognized. It used to be, uh, I know, I know before I came here, it used to be the annual meeting, the recognition of excellence, all used to be in one setting. We're gonna go back to that. And uh, it just was a feel-good meeting. Debbie's clapping her hands. It was just a feel-good meeting, and we're gonna go back to that. But we're not gonna interrupt the recognition of excellence. We're gonna let that be first. Then the annual meeting will take care of business after the recognition of excellence. Anybody want to add anything to that? Linda, Jess, anybody? Okay. All right, the next thing on our agenda is, I'm gonna open it up this, you have any other questions? This meeting lasts a little longer, which I thought it would, because we were talking about a lot of things. Do you have any other questions, comments that you want to make? Now is the time I want to give you that space. All right, if there is no other questions, I'm gonna close with what I said earlier. The Board of Directors is committed to meeting the needs of the Girl Scouts of Southern Illinois. And at the end of the word, it's community is unity. At the end of the word, community is unity. Let's stay united so we can move forward together for the girls of Southern Illinois. If I, if you guys don't have anything else, I'm gonna say to you, make it a great night. We'll talk to you soon.